Welcome to our first meeting in 2015. We do have a quorum, all board members are present. Out of courtesy, if you happen to have your cellphone on, please turn it off so that we do not have any interruptions to our meeting. And I also want to thank Deputy Bartman for being here. He has assisted us many times last year, last year meaning last calendar year, because with the board, we start a new calendar of the year this year. This is our first meeting of the new calendar year. I'm the current chair, we'll go through a process that I'll explain very shortly. Till we get there, I'm going to ask Mr. Laura if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, we need to approve or adopt the agenda that we had before us this evening. Do I hear a motion to? I have a motion by Mrs. Blaylock.
Second.
And I have a second by Ms. Grant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, seven zero. The agenda is approved. Our first item of business this evening is 2.01, and we're going to be looking at reorganizing the board. As you notice, I opened the meeting with a gavel, and this gavel will pass on to a new board member in a few minutes. So this part is focused on the reorganization of the board, which includes the selection of a chair, the selection of the vice chair, approval of a clerk, deputy clerk, and superintendent's designee to attend meetings in the absence of the superintendent, the approval of the meeting schedule for this calendar year, and confirmation of the school board code of ethics. As the current chair, I will preside at the selection of the chair, and then transfer the gavel to the newly elected chair. The chair has multiple responsibilities for which the vice chair will fill in as needed. I just want to highlight some of these responsibilities, it's not all-inclusive. Presides at regular meetings, special call meetings, workshops, joint meetings with the board of supervisors, and school board closed session meetings. Facilitates and moderates discussion among the board members seeking consensus as appropriate using Robert's Rules of Order. Prepares board committee assignments. Communicates regularly with other board members, keeping them informed of school matters. Maintains ongoing contact with the superintendent on relevant school matters. Prepares board agendas with the superintendent. Takes the lead on contract negotiation, evaluation, and goal-setting with the superintendent. Takes the lead on developing priorities for school board annual goal-setting and board professional development. Prepares and delivers, in conjunction with the vice chair and the superintendent, the approved school board budget presentation to the board of supervisors. Signs contracts, official minutes, and resolutions approved by the board. Approves board member local travel reimbursements online, and signs board member expense reimbursement vouchers. These activities and duties require considerable time and dedication by the chair and vice chair. This list is not all-inclusive, but does provide some idea of what is entailed with the duties and responsibilities of a chair, and ultimately the vice chair if needed. These leadership positions are critical to the effectiveness of the board. And now we'll proceed with the selection process. Board members, I will begin with opening the floor for the nominations for Chair of the Spotsylvania County School Board for the 2015 calendar year. Mr. Braswell.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Don Shelley for Chair.
Any other nominations?
Do you need a second for that, Mr. Chairman?
No, sir. We will, first we'll accept nominations, and then we'll proceed with the rest of the agenda. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, there are no other nominations. I'm going to ask for a motion to close nominations for the chair.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Blaine to close nominations. Do we have a second? Second to close nominations.
I, a second.
Second by Mr. Braswell. Call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, seven zero. Nominations for Chair are closed. Okay, so it's five two. Okay, that's for closing nominations for Chair. I'd ask whether there's any other nominations, there were no other nominations given, so that closes the process for...
Seven zero.
Seven zero, okay. Correct. Okay, it's recorded, a motion by Mr. Blaine, and a second by Mr. Braswell to close nominations for Chair, and the vote was seven zero. Now we have a motion to approve the first nominee, which is Mrs. Miss Shelley. Could I have a motion to approve the nomination?
I make a motion that we approve the nomination.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Braswell to approve Ms. Shelley as the Chair for 2015. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Mr. Blaine, is there any discussion? If not, then I'm going to call for the roll call vote for the approval of Ms. Shelley to be the Chair for the Spotsylvania County School Board for the 2015 school year. I'll start with Mr. Blaine.
Uh, yes.
Blaine, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Blaylock, aye. Mr. Laura?
Nay.
Laura, nay.
Shelley, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Grant, nay.
Grant, nay, and Meyer, aye. It is approved, five two, with Ms. Shelley being the Chair for the Spotsylvania County School Board for 2015 school calendar year. It is now an honor for me to present the gavel to Ms. Shelley, and I think the easiest way to do this would be for me just to give her the gavel, and, because we have a whole section to take care of for the approval. Ms. Shelley. I congratulate Ms. Shelley for being the Chair, and the gavel is the symbol of the duties and responsibilities that accompany this position. I and my fellow board members pledge our support to you as the Chair, and we look forward to working with you, and you in providing the anticipation of the leadership that we know you will provide to this board. Ms. Shelley, the gavel is yours, and we'll now proceed with, you will ask for the nominations for Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Maher. Before I continue, I just want to say thank you to your service as our Board Chair for the 2014 calendar year. You've done a wonderful job, and I feel that I've learned a lot through watching what you have done, that I may be asking for some support and advice, but you have been a mentor, so thank you very much for all of your time. Okay, I call for the nominations for Vice Chair. Mrs. Blaylock.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley, congratulations on your chairmanship, and again, I want to thank Dr. Meyer for his service, your service the year prior as my Vice Chair. You've been a right arm to me for a long time, and I appreciate everything you've done. I'd like to put the nomination on the floor for Mr. Baron Braswell. He's proven to be not only a great leader of the community, but a very strong school board member, and I'll nominate him as Vice Chair of our school board.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close the nominations for Vice Chair?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion by Dr. Meyer, and a second by Mr. Blaine. May I have a motion for Mr. Braswell to become our Vice Chair?
You had the motion by my...
Okay, I'm sorry. It's okay, thank you.
Call for the votes.
Roll call, please, with Mr. Blaine.
Aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Laura, nay.
Grant, nay.
Shelley, aye. So with the five two, Mr. Braswell is our new Vice Chair. Congratulations, Mr. Braswell. Now we need to vote on the clerk of the board. Dr. Baker has suggested Dr. Dennis Martin. May I have a motion to approve Dr. Martin as the clerk of the board?
I will so move.
Okay, with a nomination, with a motion by Mrs. Grant, Ms. Grant, and a second by Mr. Blaine, and vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Seven zero vote. Now Deputy Clerk of the Board, a motion to approve Mrs. Patricia Bowler as the Deputy Clerk of the Board. So a motion by Mrs. Blaylock, and a second by Mrs. Grant. Call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a seven zero vote. The superintendent's designee will attend meetings in the absence of the superintendent, with Ms. Flannar. May I have a motion to that effect, please?
So moved.
So, Dr. Meyer with the motion, and second with Mr. Blaine, and vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Seven zero vote, thank you. The board calendar, moving right along, the board calendar was in our agenda. It is for the following year, and we just, we need a motion to approve the agenda as it was presented in our agenda. There was also on March 9th at four o'clock, we had previously said that we would have our board workshop prior to the meeting beginning at four o'clock as well. So do I have a motion to approve the calendar year schedule of board meetings?
I make a motion that we approve the calendar as presented in the, in the minutes, in the agenda, excuse me.
I'll second that motion.
So, a motion by Mr. Braswell, a second by Dr. Meyer. Is there any, any discussion? Okay, may I call for the vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven zero. Code of Ethics. I am just somebody, make a, please make a motion that we just reaffirm the code of ethics that we have specified in our board policy that we all signed last year. So a motion by Mr. Blaine, a second by Ms. Grant. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll, and I'm going to do a roll call vote for this one, I'll start on Ms. Grant's side, that's time.
Grant, aye.
Laura, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Shelley, aye, seven zero. Okay, now we will change our seats, so what we'll do is, I will take Dr. Meyer's seat. Before we go on, I also want to thank Mr. Laura for his time as our Vice Chairman in this last calendar year as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Laura, for all of your, your support and your service to the board. So what we'll do is, we will do it by order of seniority, after the Chair and the Vice Chair take their seats, and then Mr. Laura, well, you will, as the senior member of the board, you will just, you get to pick where you would like to sit, after with the other, after Mr. Braswell and I take our seats, and then we will go from there.
I'd like to sit next to my favorite cowboy friend.
I'll remain in my seat.
And then we have Dr. Meyer and Mr. Blaine. Are you good where you are? And Ms. Grant. Okay. Okay, on to 3.0, Riverbend High School Drama, three performance, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Riverbend High School Drama, three students, Erin Judkins, Rashana Gaines, Angel Melvin, and Dylan Klausert will be performing a scene from Lorraine Hansberry's award-winning drama, A Raisin in the Sun. This first appeared on Broadway in 1959. Hansberry won the New York Drama Critics Circle Award as the best play of the year that year. This achievement at 29 made her the youngest playwright in history to receive this honor. Since that time, Hansberry's play has been produced around the world and has changed the way African-Americans are seen on stage. A Raisin in the Sun is considered to be a classic American play. This scene is under the direction of Ms. Kelly Cresswell.
Yes, Travis?
Can I please have fifty cents for the poor Negro bucks?
No, Travis, we don't have it.
Please, Mama.
Drop it, Travis, we don't have the money.
Now why you going to go and tell the boy that? Here's fifty cents.
Thanks, Daddy.
For a matter of fact, here's another fifty cents. Go grab yourself a taxi or buy some food or something.
Hot dog, thanks Daddy.
Now go on to school.
All right, goodbye.
That's my boy. You know what I was thinking about, wasn't I? Baffling this morning?
No.
How come you always trying to be so pleasant?
What is there to be pleasant about?
You know, you want to know what I was thinking about or not?
I know what you was thinking about.
About what me and Willie Hanson talking about last night?
Willie Hanson's a good-for-nothing liar, now.
Anybody who talks to me has got to be a good-for-nothing liar mouth, ain't he? And what you know about who's a good-for-nothing liar mouth anyways? Charlie Atkins is a good-for-nothing liar mouth too, wasn't he? When he wanted me to join the, the dry cleaning business? Now he's grossing a hundred thousand dollars a year, a hundred thousand dollars a year, and you still calling him a good-for-nothing liar mouth, don't you?
Oh, Walter Lee.
You tired, ain't you? So tired of everything. Me, the boy, the way we live, this beat-up home, so tired, moaning, groaning. But you couldn't be on my side, for one thing. You couldn't help me out for anything, could you?
Walter, please, leave me alone.
A man needs for his woman to back him up.
Walter.
Mama will listen to you. You know she listen to you more than she do me and Benny. She think more of you. All you have to do is sit down one morning, we're drinking coffee and talking about things like you doing all, and sip on some coffee, and say easy like, you been thinking about that deal Walter Lee is selling the rest of it, with the liquor store and all, then sip on some more coffee. Like what you saying really ain't that important to you. Next thing you know, she be listening good, and when I come home, I can tell her all the details. See, baby, we got it figured out, me, Willie, and Bobo.
Bobo.
Yeah, this little liquor store we got mine costs about seventy-five thousand dollars, but we're thinking we can get the initial investment for about thirty thousand. That's ten thousand each. Course, there's a couple hundreds, so you ain't got to wait your whole life for them clowns to get your license approved.
You mean graft.
Baby, don't call it that. See, that just goes to show it, the women understand about this world. Don't nothing come to you unless you pay somebody off.
Walter, please, leave me alone, and eat your eggs, they're going to be cold.
That's it. There you are. Man say to his woman, I got me a dream. His woman say, eat your eggs. Man say, I gotta take here hold of this world, baby. His woman say, then go to work. Man say, I gotta change my life, I'm choking to death, baby. His woman say, your eggs are getting cold.
Walter, that ain't none of our money.
I was thinking about it while I was looking at myself in the mirror this morning. I am thirty-five years old, I've been married eleven years, and I got a boy who sleeps on the couch in the living room, and all I got to give him are stories about how rich white people live.
Walter, eat your eggs.
Forget my eggs, and all the eggs that ever was.
Then just go to work.
See, I am trying to talk to you about myself, and all you can say is eat them eggs and go to work.
Honey, you never say nothing new. I listen to you every day, every night, and every morning, and you never say nothing new. So you rather be Mr. Arnold than be his chauffeur. So I'd rather be living in fucking hands, guys.
That is exactly what is wrong with the colored women of this world. They don't know nothing about building their man up, making them feel like they somebody, that they can do something.
There are colored men who do things.
No thanks to the colored woman.
Well, being a colored woman, I guess I can't help myself now.
We are one group of men tied down to a race of small-minded women.
I am gonna start timing those people.
Maybe, you should get up earlier.
When do you suggest, dawn? Where's the paper?
You are a horrible-looking chick at this hour.
Good morning, everybody.
How's school coming?
Lovely, just lovely, and biology is the greatest. I dissected something that looked just like you yesterday.
I was just wondering if you made up your mind about everything and all, that's it.
And what did I tell you yesterday morning? And the day before that, and the day before that... Benny, don't be so nasty. And the day before that, and the day before that.
I'm interested in you, okay? Is something wrong with that? It ain't many women besides her to be a doctor.
To be a doctor.
Have we figured out exactly how much medical school is going to cost us?
Walter, leave the girl alone, and get out of here and go to work. Come on in there, please.
You know the check's coming tomorrow.
That money belongs to Mama Walter, and it's for her to decide how she wants to use it, whether it's to buy a house, or a rocket ship, or just nail it up somewhere and look at it, but it's her money, not ours, hers.
Now ain't that fine? You just got your mother's interest at heart. You such a nice girl, but when Mama gets the money, she could always take a few thousand out and help you get through school, can't you?
I have never asked anyone to do anything for me around here.
No, but there is a line between asking and just accepting when the time comes big and wide, ain't it?
What do you want from me, brother? For me to quit school and drop dead weight?
I don't want nothing from you, but for you to stop acting wholly around here. Now me and Ruth done made some sacrifices for you, why can't you do something for the family?
Walter, don't you be dragging me into it.
You are in this. Don't you get up and go work in someone's kitchen for the past three years to put clothes on her back?
Oh, Walter, that's not fair.
Now it ain't like nobody expects you to get on your knees and say, thank you, brother, thank you, Ruth, thank you, Mama, and thank you, Travis, for wearing the same pair of shoes for two semesters.
Well, I do, all right? Thank everybody, and forgive me for wanting to be anything at all. Forgive me, forgive me, forgive me. Please, just stop it. Your mama hear you.
And who told you you had to be a doctor anyways? You so crazy about messing around with sick people, why don't you go be a nurse like other women, or just get married and shut up?
Well, you finally got it said. Three years, you finally said it. Give up, Walter, it's Mama's money.
She was my father too.
And he was my father too, and Travis's grandfather, but the insurance money belongs to Mama. And picking on me is we gonna make her give it to you to invest in any liquor store? And I for one say, God bless Mama for that.
See, did you hear? Did you hear that?
Oh, honey, please, please, go to work.
Nobody in this house is ever gonna understand me.
Cause you're a nut.
Who's a nut?
You, you a nut. He is mad, boy.
The world's most backwards race of people, and that's a fact.
And then there are all those prophets that lead us out of the wilderness and into the swamps. Benny, why you always gotta be picking on your brother like that? Can't you be a little sweeter sometimes? Fifty cents.
Yeah.
Take a tax.
You guys did a great job, thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Cresswell.
We're going to continue with 4.01 with the awards, we're going to ask Mr. Wolf to come forward and start with the first presentation with Post Oak Middle Schools' participant in the Philadelphia Thanksgiving Day Parade.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell.
On Thanksgiving Day, November 27th, 2014, thirteen Post Oak Middle School chorus students performed live on national television with the Six ABC Dunkin' Donuts Youth Master Choir, Youth Mass Choir, at the 95th Annual Thanksgiving Day Parade in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. They had the opportunity this year to perform with Candace Glover, the 2012 American Idol winner. The students vary from sixth grade to eighth grade. The following participants, when I call your name, if you could please come forward, audience, if you could please hold your applause until after I've called everybody's name. Please report to the front. Lauren Pizarro, Isabella Mas, Victoria Gregory, Kristen Sukas, Jasmine Lamoy, Amanda Bowling, Rihanna Beenum, and Kristy Hinefeld. Also, this is the second year that Lauren Pizarro, Maggie Harold, and Mackenzie Ringer have performed at the parade. Great performance and a job well done. Post Oak Chorus Director is Leon C. Lewis. If he could please come forward. Let's give them a round of applause.
One, two, three, one more, just make sure, one, two, three.
Also, as the students transition back to their seat, if any of the parents are here tonight, as well as the administration from Post Oak, if we could please get you to stand so that you may be recognized as well.
Mr. Wolf, if you could continue with the VSB A Student Achievement Fair.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, we would like to recognize Chancellor High School Redbox Improvisation Theater Group for being selected for the Student Achievement Fair showcased at the Virginia School Board Association's annual convention on November 19th. Chancellor was one of three schools selected from the state to perform at the VSB A's convention. Redbox performs sixteen to twenty shows a year, which includes community events. The group consists of seven theater students who excel in improvisation. Improvisation is acting without a script, and each show they perform, a completely original show that consists of improvisational scenes and original sketches. As I call your name, please report to the front, and again, audience, if you could please... And again, audience, if you could please hold your applause until the end. I would like to first call up Matthew Armentraut, their drama teacher. Red Box performers, Brian Ashton, Dalton Hedrick, Sidney Murray, Taylor Patzman, Kenneth Ryan, Gabby Seiverson, and Tyler Wright. Again, thank you for doing an outstanding job representing our school division at this conference. And again, if we have any other parents or administration from Chancellor here tonight, if you could please stand and be recognized as well.
Mr. Wolf, the National Gold Council of Excellence Award, please, sir.
Yes, sir. For its exemplary record of leadership, service, and activities that serve to improve the school and community, Chancellor Middle School Student Council has been awarded a two thousand fourteen National Gold Council of Excellence Award by the National Association of Student Councils. To meet requirements for the NASC, National Council of Excellence Award, a student council must demonstrate that it meets a variety of criteria. Those councils named to the gold level have successfully met a greater number of the criterion. In addition to basic requirements such as a written constitution, regular meetings, a democratic election process, and membership in NASC, schools that qualify for an award demonstrate such things as leadership training for council members, teacher staff, appreciation activities, student recognition programs, school and community service projects, spirit activities, goal-setting, financial planning, and active participation in their state and national student council associations. We applaud the work of Chancellor Middle School Student Council on receiving this distinguished award for the excellent service to their school and community. As I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. Mr. Mike Phillips, FAPD sponsor, Yusef Hagie, president, Paul Van, vice president, Nicholas Cabrera, executive secretary, Jase Taylor, executive treasurer, Baylor Gallagher, executive historian, Carly C., special attache to the executive branch.
And again, any parents or administration from Chancellor Middle School, also, if you could please stand and be recognized.
Mr. Wolf, if you could, please present the Washington Redskins Charitable Foundation Coach of the Week to these fine-looking, stone-faced gentlemen up front.
Yes, Mr. Laura, this one is for you as well. We are pleased to share that the Washington Redskins Charitable Foundation selected Coach Eric Ludden as their Redskins Coach of the Week for November twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen. Each coach selected throughout the high school season receives a one thousand dollar donation from the NFL Youth Football Fund for their football program and a framed certificate signed by NFL Commissioner Roger Goodell, Redskins Head Coach Jay Gruden, and Redskins' President and General Manager Bruce Allen. Coach Ludden led the Massaponix Panthers varsity football team to a thirteen-and-one season. They were Conference Fifteen Commonwealth District Champions and Region Five-A-North runner-up. They are ranked fourteenth in the state. Coach Ludden also received an All-Area Coach of the Year and the Conference Fifteen Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Coach Ludden.
One more, one, two, three.
Next on our long list of awards, Virginia Association, up in the Rappahannock Valley Football Officials Association Sportsmanship Award. Please, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Ms. Cresswell. Each year, the Rappahannock Valley Football Officials Association selects a regional winner for the sportsmanship award based on the conduct of players, the coaches, the school officials, the cheerleaders, and the fans. We are proud to share that Massaponix High School football team has received the sportsmanship award this year. Congratulations to the players and coaching staff. We would like to have the following coaches come forward to be recognized for encouraging good sportsmanship and being a positive role model for our students. First and foremost, Coach Eric Ludden. Coach Ludden's assistants, who are with us tonight, are Nathan Yates, Joe Farren, Shane Ludden, and John Schinberger. Assistant coaches not able to be here tonight are Drew Young, Joe Garlic, Greg Bell, Jeff Drugetz, Byron Allen, and Bernard Trice. Congratulations again, Massaponix High School.
One, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. We have Ms. Flannard come forward and give the presentation for the Virginia Association of Federal Education Program Administrators. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Cresswell. This evening, we are pleased to share that Deborah Sikursky, Title I Coordinator, has been nominated by the Board of Directors as Region Three Representative for the Virginia Association of Federal Education Program Administrators for her outstanding leadership abilities and her comprehensive knowledge of federal programs. And as a regional representative, Ms. Sikursky will serve on the Board of Directors, supporting school and division administrators in the implementation of federal education programs across the state of Virginia. Among her duties and responsibilities, she will be encouraged to communicate and collaborate among federal education administrators throughout the state of Virginia to promote opportunities for professional growth for educators involved with federal programs. Congratulations to Ms. Sikursky on this achievement. If you would please come forward.
If we have any family members for Ms. Sikursky present with us, if you would please stand.
Thank you, Ms. Flannard. And we have the Superintendent's Award. Will you be continuing with that? Please, thank you.
This month, the Superintendent's Award for Outstanding Visual Arts goes to a student named Emma Sowers, a fourth grader. She attends Smith Station Elementary School, and her art teacher is Shelby Harmon. We would like Emma Sowers and her art teacher, Ms. Harmon, to come forward and to be recognized for this outstanding accomplishment.
You wanna hold your certificate up? Ready, one, two, three. One more, just to make sure. One, two, three.
And if we have any family members representing Emma, if they would please stand to be recognized, as well as administration from Smith Station.
And our final award is the Fine Arts Award. Ms. Flannard, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Cresswell. This month, the Spotsylvania County Public Schools Administration Office is showcasing over one hundred pieces of outstanding student artwork. Five schools are in this exhibit this month. These schools are Brock Road Elementary, Art Teacher Rebecca Baring; Harrison Road Elementary, Art Teacher Erin Watson; Riverview Elementary, Art Teacher Anne Flewes; Battlefield Middle School, Art Teacher Joshua Blum; and Massaponix High School, Art Teacher Patricia Atkins. The students received a certificate of appreciation prior to the school board meeting, and we celebrate the creative success and accomplishments of each of these student artists. If there are any students that are present still, would you please stand to be recognized? Are there any art teachers that were called that are still present to please stand to be recognized? And any administration at any of the schools, please stand to be recognized.
Thank you. Congratulations to all the award recipients. There were a bunch of you, so congratulations to everybody. Onto public comments, five point oh one. Dr. Martin.
Good evening. The public comment segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time for the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another.
Good evening, Dr. Baker, Ms. Shelley, other members of the school board and administration. My name is Peter Fottenhauer. I am the president of the Spotsylvania Education Association, and I teach at Ny River Middle School. January is a month of new beginnings, and I want to start by congratulating our new chair and vice chair of the school board. Members of the SCA look forward to seeing how our school division prospers and grows under your leadership this year. We look forward to working with you and the other members of the board where we have issues of mutual concern and areas where we can work together. Next week starts budget season for most of us, that time of year when football season is wrapping up and money season is beginning. The preseason wrapped up on Thursday with the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee concluding a successful run again this year. I think that, I speak for a number of members of that committee, and I know I speak for members of the SCA, when I say that we look forward to hearing Dr. Baker's presentation next Tuesday and seeing what he lays out for you all in his proposed budget. It's unfortunate, though, that in the tenth wealthiest state in America, that once again you are likely to be forced to choose and prioritize among even the most basic of needs for the school division because our General Assembly in Richmond is struggling to meet its constitutional obligation to fully fund a system of high-quality public education in Virginia. The governor's proposed budget did no harm in that it provided level funding for K-12 education in Virginia, but we are hopeful that the General Assembly will be able to go beyond that because, as we know from recent debates on the local level here in Spotsylvania, level funding is not actually equal to the amount of funding from a previous year because of inflation and increase in costs and the expenses of doing business. I mentioned that last Wednesday to the joint public hearing that the Senate and House Budget Finance Committees held in Richmond, and it was very interesting that a superintendent from Harrisonburg and a school board member from Albemarle County were also speaking, and all of us had the same message for the senators and the delegates that they need to do a better job of finding resources at the state level to send to counties and localities that are cash-strapped and overburdened by making up for the lack of funding from the state level. Virginia ranks thirty-seventh in the nation in per pupil funding of state education, and our per pupil expenditures are down by seventeen percent since two thousand and eight. Another issue that will be popping up over the next few months is time. How are our teachers being asked to spend their time? How much delay time will we have on any given day because of weather? How much time may we have to make up? How much time are we spending on testing? How much time will Congress take before they finally reauthorize No Child Left Behind so we have a better idea from the federal government of what our accountability system will look like? Members of the SCA will be spending their time this month in Richmond on January twenty-sixth, lobbying members of our local General Assembly delegation, asking them to make sure that they are making decisions that are in the best interest of children as they go about doing their difficult job of managing the state's government. I also want to take some time today to say thank you to our bus drivers for Thursday and this morning. It's because of their skill and dedication and professionalism that we are able to have school on days when the weather makes transporting students to school a less-than-routine situation. And I also want to talk to the community just a bit because when issues of weather delays pop up, it's very easy to advise Dr. Baker about what decision he should make. And if you are a Facebook user, you may often see that it's not uncommon for three or four hundred people to comment on Ms. Blaylock's information posts about what's going on with the schools. But those same three or four hundred folks who can comment about school opening or closings or delays are a bit harder to find when it comes time when we start asking people for advice on the budget and other issues related to our school division. And I would hope that this year, more of the members of our community will find the time to join SCA and our school division in making sure that we are providing a quality public education for all of the students that are in our care because it is time that our community and the state of Virginia begin to put kids first. Thank you.
The next speaker is Randy Meyer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Randy Meyer, and I'm a middle school teacher at Battlefield Middle School. I contacted most of you today concerning what I'd like to speak about, the early retirement incentive that you're going to be discussing later on tonight. As I looked at the PowerPoint presentation this past weekend, something jumped out at me in that it had the standard ten-years experience, fifty-years-old, five-years experience, fifty-five-years-old caveats as to who's going to qualify. And it also had a statement there about seventeen years of VRS experience required. Myself, this is my fifteenth year here in Battlefield, I'm in Spotsylvania, at Battlefield and Spotsylvania, and I feel like I am being, I don't discriminate against because it doesn't look right now that I'd be eligible for the early retirement. However, I spent twenty-four years in the Navy, retired from that, and immediately went into teaching as a second career. And the seventeen years, I asked and got a response from Ms. Gaines that it was a general practice used by other school districts. I don't feel that that seventeen years is very valid these days, specifically considering, you know, we here in Spotsylvania haven't had the teachers and other staff step raises in five out of the seven years. So to use that seventeen years as a benchmark as to how much the fiscal impact is gonna be, I think there's better measures that can be probably found. I know myself, I would have a bigger impact on the payroll because at fifteen years with a master's degree than somebody who has seventeen years with a bachelor's degree. There's greater savings for me than somebody in that situation. And I'd just like to thank your consideration in looking at those types of factors. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all the speakers.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone else who did not sign up that would like to speak? Okay, this will close the public comment section of the meeting. Onto board member comments, five point oh two. We'll start with Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Meyer, thank you so much for coming to visit with us, and as I said to you in my email, I respect you and I thank you for your service to the United States Navy. I wish I would have been Army, but that's okay. We still have to, we still need a Navy. In any event, I can assure you that the issues that you brought before us are gonna be taken seriously, and we're gonna have a proper respond to you. taken seriously, and we're going to have a proper respond to you. This is not the time nor the place for me to attempt to give you a response to the issues, but I can assure you that you'll be receiving communication from the board and the administration on the matters that you raise. Thank you for being with us. As I've done a couple of times in my life, I like to recognize the principals and school division folks that are here with us. Please raise your hands so that we can thank you for being with us, especially on a night like tonight where it's been raining, and also tonight is championship night, for those of you that don't know it, and here you are with us. God bless you. Madam Chair, if you allow me a personal moment, this is a, an election year which happens every two years around here, and as I announced two years ago, I mean, four years ago, I announced that I would not be seeking a fourth term in the school board, and the reason for that being that my bride and I, who've been married for a whole bunch of years, we are planning on spending the rest of our life at Virginia Beach. Every year, we travel to the beach at least 12 times a year. Well, the time has come for us to just go and stay there. And there are 24 golf courses in Virginia Beach. My goal next year is to play on as many as I can and then decide which one is going to be my home course. And of course, I'll be involved in the school. Some school principal out there is going to be very happy because he's going to have a, a Bontier Assistant Coach to work out with the kids. But people have asked me if I'm going to miss Spotsylvania, and the answer is, no, I'm not going to miss Spotsylvania because the fact of the matter is, I might be moving, but the highway that's been taking me to Virginia Beach can also bring me to Spotsylvania. And Mr. Davis, you can look for me during the football games in the fall. I've been doing that for so many years that I won't know what to do on a Friday night, so I'll be there with you. And also, I'm looking forward to, Mr. Opocut, when the day comes that you have the inaugural game on artificial surface, I want to be there. I want to take my shoes off and walk on the turf, okay? So I'm, some of the things that I'm looking forward to. And my golf buddies and my friends, they know that once I get situated at the beach, they'll have a, not only a free place to stay, but a free course to play. So I intend to visit my friends and relatives here in Spotsylvania, and I'll also be, try to be a good host on the other side, near the ocean. So it's been fun, and my, and this is not goodbye because I still have 12 more months to serve, but I, while I have the time, I might as well say this. I came to Spotsylvania as an 18-year-old soldier with about $5 in my pocket, and I'm leaving as a husband, a father of four children, seven grandchildren, and I couldn't have picked a better place. To me, this has been paradise. I have love every day that I live in Spotsi. I have love every day that I serve this board, and have lots of friends and that I would cherish forever. So I'm looking forward to the next 12 months, and then I'm looking forward to hitting the links out on the beach. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. First of all, I'd like to say thanks to my fellow board members for my year as Chair. It was a very productive year. Thanks, Mr. Laura, as my Vice Chair. We considered it a very productive year.
Yes, yes.
It's the first year in three years we're able to get some, even more support from our local authorities, so it was a successful year in that regard. So I want to thank you, take this opportunity to say thanks to everyone for your help, and I pledge my support to Ms. Shelley and Mr. Braswell for them as Chair and Vice Chair. It's not done by one, this is an effort done by seven. It requires all seven. Also like to acknowledge that I received a call several days ago from the finance office here saying, "I have a check for you to take to CECA." CECA is Spotsylvania Emergency Concerns Association. It's for Spotsylvania County citizens and families. Today, we served 19 families. We have the knockout, rock-out for homeless, and CECA serves, you know, many families that are in desperate need of help. So I wanted to say, this opportunity, one, to give acknowledgement to CECA, two, to say thanks for the staff that did a silent auction and benefited $264 for CECA, and that is, goes a long, long way. And I know it's not just the finance office here. Chancellor High School, for one, I know pledges about 45 turkeys every Thanksgiving. That goes a long way. And there are other schools, I'm just naming a few, but I do know that they helped support. So I want to take this opportunity to say thanks for the support that our schools give to our own families, not just the program. I know Mrs. Blaylock and Ms. Shelley work on, you know, but it goes beyond that, to help all the families in Spotsylvania County. With that, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Mrs. Blaylock.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Just because Dr. Meyer was just talking about it, it's a good time to remind everyone that our treasure house is located behind Massaponix High School. If you want to donate to our homeless population here, there's always a box open, and there's hours that you could take your items. So thank you for commenting on that. I just want to welcome everyone back. It is our first meeting of the new year. Congratulations to our new Chair and Vice Chair. I look forward to working with both of you this year. I'm certainly not going to call any names because I don't want to steal their thunder, but this past Saturday, we held our Division Y Spelling Bee, but I couldn't help but notice the hard work put into it from our staff members, and I want to thank everyone who put in their time for these students to participate. It was a wonderful event, and I wanted to recognize Ms. Renee Daniels, who allowed it to be streamlined and televised for the first time, and I had so much positive feedback. And that really is what I like about Spotsylvania County. We're always moving forward and growing, so I think that it went live this year was a big plus, and again, much positive feedback on that. With that, I'll yield back to you, know the comments again helping you save travels this week, and on the ways for the delays, I think we've had positive feedback on that, and the parents have been so, so good and positive. Even though they have 300 or 400 comments on each one, a lot of them are good, and they have been understanding about what we've had to go through the last couple of mornings. So thank you for that as well.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Meyer and Mr. Laura for their leadership of the board over the last year. We've made some really great advancements in terms of progress in terms of the budget. But the thing that I want to highlight first and foremost is that they did an excellent job of making sure that we had great lines of communication, both vertically and horizontally. And so I want to thank you, Dr. Meyer and Mr. Laura, for your work in that regard, and it's my hope that Ms. Shelley and I maintain that great level of opening lines of communication with the board of supervisors and horizontally amongst each other so that we can have a strong and effective board for the year coming forward. I also want to, we had plenty of awards that folks will recognize, and I want to salute them again personally, but I am, I just have to single out our football coaches. They do a great job each and every year of molding and guiding young men and making great decisions in their lives and giving them an opportunity to compete and learn in the laboratory of life. And it just so happens that a lot of these young people, we don't get a chance to see anything other than the scoreboard as a result of their efforts. But if you look at them five, 10 years from now, you'll see the great work that those men were recognized for in their efforts as being a coach. So I salute them, and I honor them for what they do. I know exactly the dedication that a coach puts in and feeds into our young people, and I just, I wish that we could do more for them, but we're going to continue to try to improve the quality of their life in the next budget. With that being said, I also want to thank the Riverbend Drama for the excellent presentation they provided to us on Ways and the Sun. It was captivating. I almost didn't want the play to end, and being that I read the book, I am excited about the opportunity to see them actually act out the entire play because I've never seen it done in such a professional manner. But for those that are watching, that is just indicative of the great work that our students do in Spotsylvania County each and every year, and we need to thank our teachers for molding and guiding these young people. So with that being said, I want to turn the floor back over to you, Madam Chair. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Ms. Gramp.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to address your point that the PowerPoint's already been changed with your option included, and it is just something that is worth considering for us, and it might actually be a better fiscal option, as Ms. Gaines will be explaining to us later. But since I'm on the finance committee, I honed in on your request, and we have already addressed it, so you can look at the new PowerPoint at your pleasure. And with that being said, it is championship night, and I will no longer speak.
Thank you, Ms. Gramp, and I just want to, once again, say thank you to Dr. Meyer and Mr. Laura for their leadership over the last year, and so we really appreciate everything that you did. And one other thing, there will be Mr. McLaughlin, the Chancellor District Supervisor, and myself will be holding a town hall meeting at the Chancellor Community Center on Wednesday, January 28th at 6:30. So just want to let you be aware that that will be happening. And that is all I have for this evening as well. Five point oh three, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I would also like to thank Dr. Meyer and Mr. Laura for their impeccable service over the last year. It's been a real pleasure for me to work with both of them, and they really worked well as a, as a duo and as a tag team often in helping me, as well as the entire board, navigate through whatever always challenging budget situations, as well as other, other matters of the board, and so I do appreciate their leadership, and I also congratulate Ms. Shelley and Mr. Braswell in their respective roles, and look forward to continuing to work with all of you. I think I'm very fortunate as superintendent to work with a school board that believes in action leadership, believes in diving in and committing fully in any way possible, and so the desire to take on leadership, I appreciate that, knowing that everyone is extremely busy. So I thank you all for that. So many things have already been highlighted about the highlights, but it was a really extraordinary night for me, just the, the wealth of talent that was displayed here, and I could go through all of them. But I, sometimes when I get to go out and meet with students, I was able to learn about our Chancellor Middle School students upon eating lunch with them, when they began to tell me that they were a national award winner. And I said, "Well, come on down, you know, we need to, we need to share that with everyone." But one thing that sort of sticks out to me is, I know that in sports, it's often the bottom line that matters a lot to all of us as, as fans of sports and is, especially if our children are in the, in the field of competition, but for a team to achieve what the Massaponix High School football team achieved over the course of this year, but then to be known by their peers and fellow coaches and officials for their sportsmanship on the field, I, I don't know that anything can make me prouder because it's about character and it's about how they represent our school division and our county. And I think that that could be said for everything we saw tonight, just the representation of quality, and I thank our teachers and our staff, so many who, who put it out there every day and, and leave it all on the field of battle and then come back the next day re-energized to do more. The last thing that I wanted to share with the board is just a reminder that a week from tomorrow night, we will be having a budget presentation, the Superintendent's Proposed Budget. I, along with our staff, have been hard at work putting together that proposal, and so we're looking forward to next Tuesday to begin that discussion, and I just know that ahead of time, a great deal of thought and a lot of considerations have been put into what is still an ongoing process. But I think it's important to note that what I have learned, very similar to making snow decisions, is that we, we manage very diverse perceptions as leaders of a large school division, as a large organization, and we know that not everyone is going to be completely happy with those decisions, but I do want you to know in advance that we've tried to consider, and most importantly, what is best for our students, what is best for our school division in moving forward. And I thank you for your support. I think you've supported with these continued difficult winners, difficult winner decisions, but, you know, I always get so excited at this time of year. It's just so much fun for all of us to, to anticipate those early mornings, but I have a great staff, a great team out there, and transportation, so many folks that are just tremendous, and we have great confidence in them, and I thank them for hitting the ground running already this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Six point oh one, Board Committee Reports. Does anybody have a report at this time? Okay, six point oh two, Food Services Department Update. Mr. Opocut.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Dr. Baker, members of the board. Tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce and invite down to the podium Mr. Keith Naco, our Director of Food Services, George Higley, the Sedexo District Manager, and Mr. Jeffrey Bakelmann, the Sedexo Vice President for Operations, who will be addressing the board with a, I think you'll, you'll enjoy this report and update that they'll be giving you. And I just want to note that at the conclusion of the PowerPoint presentation, Dr. Baker, we're going to call you down to the podium to present a special award of excellence. And then, Mr. Rusty Davis, we're going to ask you to come down to the podium for a special award as well presented by Sedexo. So without further ado, I will turn things over now to Mr. Bakelmann.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Madam Chair. Congratulations, distinguished members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, LaShawn, and Don. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Jeff Bakelmann. As Don mentioned, I'm the Regional Vice President for Sedexo, in charge of the Mid-Atlantic Operations for our K-12 business. It's my pleasure today to give you a brief presentation, kind of, we're mid-year into our, our second year, but I'm going to give you a summary of some of the highlights from our first year, since I haven't had that opportunity to do so. First, real brief, an overview of the presentation. I'm going to talk briefly about our mission and values, some of the performance highlights from the previous year and current year, and our current and future outlook of the program, the nutrition program in Spotsia County, Spotsylvania County School Division. First, our statement about our mission and values. Mission and values, it's real simple. Our shareholders, our customers, we employ over 200 employees of Spotsylvania Community in the nutrition program here. That's a, it's a large employer for the division and in the, in the, in the county, quite frankly. And one of the things we value about that is providing opportunities for those individuals for growth, development, and advancement, and making it a rewarding and enriching experience for them. We recognize that the best way to respond to the expectations of our shareholder is through steady communication and growth, aligning, understanding what our customer needs are and what the expectations of each of you, as well as all of our customers and stakeholders in the division are. And we also believe that it's very important work and meaningful work. We believe that the service we provide here is invaluable. It's not just providing school meals to students, but it's part of the educational experience for those students and does contribute to student advancement and achievement by providing good nutritious meals for students during the academic day. First, our core values, our mission statement, our value state, value proposition is to improve the quality of life for people wherever and whenever they come together. This was a foundation of our founder, Pierre Balon. Little French man started his catering business in Marseille, France by recognizing an opportunity to provide hot meals to fishermen as they came in off of the docks in Marseille, France. And from there, we've grown into a global company. But the one thing that I can say, I can stand here and tell you, is that we've always maintained the, the importance of recognizing and keeping our fundamental values about improving the quality of life. the quality of life. Also contributing to the social and economic environment, and developing the cities and the regions that we serve. Our Better Tomorrow Plan kind of summarizes what we do, and you could break it down by the three W's. We are, we do, and we engage. We are, the fundamentals, the cornerstones of our company, as I mentioned earlier, maintaining business integrity, and our commitment to human rights throughout the world in various organizations and programs that we offer. Employee Spring Board, by providing those opportunities to the employees. In North America, Sedexo employs over 125,000 people. That is an obligation on our company to contribute to the advancement of those individuals. That's no different in Spotsylvania at a local level. Our commitment to diversity and inclusion, recognizing that the communities we serve are vast and different, and so diverse in many ways, and not just in ethnicities, but in tastes and cultures and various other differences we all have, which makes us who we are. Health and safety, and providing a safe and healthy environment for our employees, looking at safety, workplace safety as a critical measurement of our success, providing a safe environment for our employees so that they can come to work and not injure themselves, and contribute to their family without losing income. And of course, corporate governance, recognizing that we do have a very valuable resource that we're providing, and service that we're providing, and the importance of maintaining transparency and systems and procedures that are auditable and ethical. We do. What we do is, as an employer, we actively promote health and nutrition and wellness commitment to our communities that we serve, protecting the environment and reducing our carbon footprint, engaging our employees, our staff, our customers in dialogue and in feedback, so we can continue to advance and improve the services that we provide. Now, some of our performance highlights from the previous year. First of all, we -- sorry. First of all, we passed the USDA Federal Audit Review Program with full compliance. We passed a third-party audit. One of the benefits of Sedexo is we hire third-party auditing groups to review unannounced audits on our schools, on your schools, checking for standards in health practices and in safety, and environmental safety, making sure our employees' environment is safe, and the food that the students are served is maintained properly to protect them from any potential food illness or environmental issues. All of those audits have been passed. Aligning our initiatives with Spotsylvania County Public Schools and Division-wide strategic plan, not just taking our agenda and imposing it on you, but making sure that your expectations and your goals are weaved into the fabric of our plan. Keeping us both aligned helps us to achieve the results that I'm about to share with you. Some continued highlights for things that we've done is, we have had a great improvement in student meal participation, which was one of the primary reasons we were selected last year to provide nutrition services for the district. We also ended the first year with a program surplus. There was no subsidy necessary to the Enterprise Fund, and those excess funds could be used to further improve and enhance the program and upgrade equipment. And again, most importantly, not having to subsidize the food program keeps those important dollars in your educational curriculum. And engaging in various activities, not only with the students in the schools that are in the division, but within the community. Here's some highlights of our meal participation for last school year. Breakfasts were up, about over 1,000 meals, 100 meals per day. Now, while that may not seem like a significant number, if you look at how many school days there are in a year, that number does tend to grow. Now, there were a significantly less amount of serving days in last school year than in the prior school year. So I would have liked to have put that annual number in there, but it didn't look so good. But keep in mind, there was a lot less days. So if you would just extrapolate the difference of the meals year-over-year times the 180 calendar days that you might start with, that number gets too close to 18,000. Now, for lunches, even greater, almost 1,000 meals a day over the course of a normal school year would be in excess of 150,000 meals per day, just in the program meals. So there was an increase in meal participation, which is terrific. That means that students are buying more food because the variety has been improved, the quality has been improved, and the student acceptance has greatly improved from previous years. Year-over-year, program surplus in fiscal year 13 was $281,912. Last school year, $633,610 surplus into the Enterprise Fund. I also want to, I just want to point out that, again, the mission, the core goal here was not strictly on a fiscal scale. It was a combination of all. But the primary goal has always been driving meal participation, feeding more students, providing more healthy nutritious meals, again, so they can advance in their academic performance in the year. That would typically translate into greater profits, which we saw. Some of the key differences and updates were in the amount of full-time positions, more in the leadership role over the prior year. That was done through the addition of a dietitian, full-time dietitian, three operations managers to help facilitate and train and work with the employees in all the schools, facilitating the benefits and the full program values. Adding a Director of Human Resources for the school food service employees. With over 200 employees, there was a great need to have some HR support at a local level. That helps us with working through problems, also in the training and development, and in the recognition of the performance of the staff that's here, as well as an assistant for the HR manager. Here's some of the fun stuff that we had got to do this year, is some wonderful pictures of Liftoff, our mascot, who would visit some of the elementary schools, creating some excitement, also worked into a educational curriculum with our dietitian and with the teachers in the elementary schools. We've had visiting chefs from Mary Washington College who have come to support us. Mary Washington College is also a facility that employs Sedexo. And one of the benefits of Sedexo, as we proposed, was the resources that we have in the greater Spotsylvania area from the various businesses that we have. We like to share those resources and bring in everybody we can to help support the businesses and in the communities we serve. So we've had chefs come in from Mary Washington to help work with the kids, and they love it. We have the best customer base in the company, in my opinion. We've had health fairs in the community. We've had student surveys. We've surveyed the students electronically, using our tablets, where we can get real-time feedback from the students. And that's helped us adjust and plan our menus based on the feedback we receive from students, where in the past, a paper survey had to be used and submitted, and they just are not efficient because they take so long to tabulate that information. We get that information very quickly now, and we're able to target the expectations and the areas that we want to improve in very quickly. Some of the program enhancements, subconnections, we've implemented made-to-order delis, where students can have their sandwiches prepared in front of them, as opposed to them being prepared prior to their arrival, even if they were done five minutes before the student comes into the line and it's wrapped up in cellophane. It just doesn't have that same fresh appearances as if they were made and put together and assembled in front of them. So that's been very successful. Our salad bars have been well-received and have had tremendous participation from them. Our Simply to Go program for students who are on the move gives students an option for salad shakers and other whole, healthy nutritious items, where they can take them back to their study group or their after-school group, if that were to be the case. And of course, monthly promotional series, every month in all school levels, we'll have a monthly promotion, just to create excitement and encourage students to try new things. Sedexo MyWay Experience is our way to interact with the parents in the community, and it allows parents to view our menus, ask questions. There's also resources and allergy information that's posted on there, and meal assistance information, to encourage parents who may not know that they're eligible for free or reduced meals, as people's situations change very rapidly. Many parents, we found, were unaware that they could fill out an application at any time during the year, and it's not just at the beginning of the year throughout. So if their situation changes with their income, they're still eligible to fill out those forms. So we continually encourage those parents to consider that. And of course, in our student well-being news, just posting news items about what's new in the nutrition field and what's hot. What are those exciting things that are out there? I heard mentioned before, the Camp Out, Rock Out, and Knock Out fundraiser for the homeless people in Spotsylvania County. We help participate with all of those functions in any way we can. Spotsylvania Education, we were platinum sponsor for the Spotsylvania Education Foundation Golf Tournament to support the IDEA grants for teachers in the division. Family Fun Nights and Parent Resource Center, of course, a great debate luncheon, fine arts receptions, and donations to the local food bank. Employee engagement was another area that we heard loud and clear when we were proposing our offer here. And it was a great need and desire to have very seamless boundaries between division and non-division employees. We made a huge effort to try and improve the situation with that and the morale of the employees. And we believe we were very successful at doing that, as we have seen a drop in -- we're still in attendance issue, but it isn't as great as it was in the past. But more, we've seen a lot of collaboration between the two, and I think that's a credit to the team that's been on site. Our food service team holiday celebration, there is a picture of one, Linda McGee, kind of doing the shuffle over here. But just some great activities with the staff here, because they are really the cornerstone, and the reason we have been successful is because they are engaged. And of course, our end-of-the-year celebration. Next, this is an internal award, a Sedexo Award, and Spotsylvania County Public Schools' food services team won Sedexo's annual Award of Excellence for outstanding performance and adherence to the highest quality standards in the Mid-Atlantic region. It is my pleasure, I am privileged to decide and review all of the school districts within my area, within my region. And I make a selection based on some very rigid criteria. And that criteria is really not just about financial performance, but it is about, you know, the way the program is received. It's about client satisfaction, student satisfaction, innovation in programs, and again, adherence to the strictest and highest standards that we have. And you should be very proud of the team and the staff in Spotsylvania County, because this was our first year. And I certainly wouldn't want to tell you that first years are not successful by any stretch, but there sometimes can be a struggle, because we're learning, we're all getting used to each other. But I can tell you, in 25 years in the school division business, I don't recall ever seeing an opening as successful as the Spotsylvania School Division opening was. And I attribute that to the team that's here, but more to the collaboration and the support that we received from everyone here. And Don Appico and LaShawn have just been wonderful, and Linda have been terrific to work with. And I can truly say this is a partnership, and it is my privilege and pleasure to be here. Now, a little bit of some of the items that are in progress and are on the horizon. Our Future Chef Program, more to come on that, but that's a wonderful program where students will participate in a culinary program, similar to what you've seen on TV. We came up with it first, by the way. And it's just a great way for students to interact, and it's a wonderful program. Vote and Be Heard, again, is about getting student interaction. Tell us which are your favorite items, which items you'd love to see more of, and which items you don't want to ever see again. Our Healthy High School Challenge, by the way, Spotsylvania was a high school, was one of the winners of this challenge, and we have a $500 check for Spotsylvania students of that school. We're going to continue with our Guest Chef Program and expand it. Partnering with the District Wellness Program to continue to improve and promote that, school gardens, and market and expand all of our catering offerings to provide catering for more functions within the division and in the community at large. I just want to, again, thank everybody, and thank all of you for the opportunity to be here and provide services to Spotsylvania County School Division, and I'd like to continue to do that in the future. But thank you very, very much. It's my pleasure. I'd love to open it up to questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Blaylock?
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. In your presentation, I was noticing a list of where you donate to different things in the community. And I've said this to a lot of people, and it's kind of, I don't, everybody thinks it's a great idea, but nothing's happened. So I'm going to say it again, and hopefully we'll ponder it a little bit more. But I would love to see you all invest in a culinary scholarship, and maybe we could look into that, too. Maybe even if it's one student per high school who is looking to advance their culinary career, I think it would be more advantageous to use any funds we have, maybe, to donate. And that way, it would seem to go hand-in-hand with what you do. And so I don't know why the idea hasn't been taken, but I keep putting it out there, and I'm going to keep saying that I would like to see a culinary scholarship.
One of the opportunities we have to do that, when we conduct these Future Chef contests, and this is a great suggestion, we can charge an admittance fee. It's a low admittance fee, it might be $2 or $3 per guest. All of those proceeds could be returned to the school division to be used for a scholarship grant, as you deem fit.
Well, I think the details need to be worked out. I don't need that right now. I just think it needs to be thrown on the table and looked at, you know, from different angles, maybe the school division partnering with you all. But I think that would be something that we should look into.
That's a terrific suggestion. I will work that out with LaShawn and Mr. Appico.
That'd be great.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you for your presentation, sir. I have a couple, I guess, questions and comments. First of all, I appreciate the level of detail that you provided in your briefing. And I noticed on one of the slides, you had mentioned a $281,000 surplus, and then the following year was over $630,000 surplus. What do you attribute the surplus to? Was it an issue of... to? Was it an issue of cutting expenses, or was it an issue of more people purchasing, you know, meals, as you were saying? What was the significance of the surplus and how we arrived at it?
The primary difference was when we transitioned from one vendor to the next, we saw a significant reduction in product costs and food costs.
Product costs and food costs. Okay. And so, how do we translate that? And of course, we, we want you to be profitable. We want you to be profitable. How do we translate that to the charge that parents are paying for their children to receive a breakfast or a lunch? Are we charging a rate that's commensurate with the level of profit that they're getting? Or are we, are we on target? Is there something that would occur that would cause us to see an opportunity for the stakeholders or the parents to receive some benefit?
Currently, we are on target. We work with the federal government, and they do prescribe what the rate should be. So we are on target.
Okay, okay. And the last thing I want to do, I commend you for your community involvement. And I want to encourage you, if you could, one day, for us to get together and go over to Chancellor High School on a Wednesday. And they have a program called Lightning Jolt. And there are young folks there that are receiving job training that are, I guess, intellectually disabled. And they do great work. And part of the Lightning Jolt is to provide job training, and it just so happens that these young people are receiving some job training in food service. And since you've mentioned that you're looking for diversity in terms of some of your employment practices, it would be a great idea for you, and I'd love for you to come with me and have breakfast with these young folks that they prepare and see how talented they are and how we can incorporate and integrate them into a great company that you run. Thank you.
I'd be happy to take you up on that. And just if I might, just to be clear, on the profit, the profit that were on those slides, that profit is retained by the school division. That's not a profit retained by Sedexo.
Any more comments or questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This is the, this is the Award of Excellence that I mentioned before. And it's a cup where previous, our previous award recipients, their name is engraved on it, and it gets passed around. So we're going to let Dr. Baker and the vision enjoy the cup. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Maybe add a, add a green jacket with it as well.
That's, that might be the next. Oh, and of course, the check. I asked Keith to get a big one, but.
Yeah, the cup's nice, but not for the check.
Once again, thank you very much, Sedexo. Thank you. Okay, on to the consent agenda, item 7.01 and 7.02. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening, of the minutes of the December 8th workshop and the December 8th regular meeting, and donations which are usual and customary, staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So a motion by Dr. Meyer and a second by Ms. Grant. And vote, please.
Aye.
Aye. So we have 6-0 with Mr. Blaine being absent. Okay, on to the action items. Action item 8.01. That would be Ms. Gaines, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Lady Shelley. School Board members, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, and Happy New Year to everyone. As you are aware, the school board's first budget session for FY16 was held following the regular board meeting on November the 10th. Based on feedback shared by school board members, staff is proposing two options for the next budget work session, which is scheduled for January 26. One option is for the school board to conduct the budget work session on Friday, January 23rd at 4:00 p.m. to 5:45. Another option would be to keep the work session on January 26, but change the start time to 4:00 p.m. with an end time of 5:45. Staff does favor option two. It follows the format used by the school board for its workshops, which works extremely well. It also allows staff and school board members to end the day a little earlier. At this time, staff recommends that the school board considers approving one of the two options, or even identifying another option, or keeping it is the way it is currently.
Okay, Ms. Grant is making a motion for option two.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, with a second by Mr. Dr. Meyer. Do we have any discussion?
I just want to, from what I see on the screen here, I think the start times are flipped. It has 7:30 to 4, I'm assuming that means from 4 to 7:30.
Normally, we would start at 7:30 because we would have the work session after the regular school board meeting, which starts at 6:30. So we would change the start time from 7:30 to 4:00 p.m.
Okay.
So what actually happened before the meeting.
Okay, gotcha.
Ms. Blaylock?
I prefer option one. I want to put that out there as discussion if anyone else does. Option one is the better date and time for me.
Do we have any discussion for the second option, for the other option? Okay, be that. We will take a vote on the option with the start time on, speaking, on January 26th, beginning at 4 o'clock p.m. The Monday, the Monday prior to the neck, to the work, to the next board meeting, it would be prior to the board meeting, beginning at 4 o'clock. So call for the vote, please.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye. So that would be 5-1 with Ms. Blaylock with the nay and Mr. Blaine absent. On to item number 8.02. Ms. Gaines?
Okay. And looking at the action that's before you, Budget Amendment Number Nine. The school board did have three bonds that were refinanced, 2004 AGO, 2006 GO, and 2005 EDA. And what we're recommending here is that you approve the request to have the funds loaded in our system. The transaction was already approved by the board supervisors several months ago. The total amount is $43.7 million. These funds will be used to pay off the owed debt, as well as to take care of the bond issuance cost.
Do I have a motion to the item Budget Amendment Number Nine?
So moved.
I'll second.
And Dr. Meyer with the, with the motion, and Ms. Grant with the second. Do we have any discussion?
Ms. Gaines?
Yes, sir. And what we've done, we've started to look at the budget for '15. There's several areas where needs have come up, and we'll bring something to the school board to consider, probably in April.
Any more discussion? Okay, may I have a vote, please?
Aye.
6-0 with Mr. Blaine absent. 8.03, Ms. Gaines.
Okay, thank you. What we want to do at this time is to share with the board a PowerPoint. And we want to give you an update on the state budget, give you a recap of the survey results, and provide you with scenarios for consideration. When looking at the state budget, we had some positive news as well as some negative news. The positive news is that there were no cuts to K-12. The not-so-good news is that there were no increases. I would say also, when looking at the VRS teacher rate, that did go down from 14.5 to 14.15. That saved the school division almost $400,000. So that is great news. So what does that put us at? For 2015, 2016, the state budget would be at 126.1. I want you to keep in mind, this is status quo, and it still is $6.7 million less than where we were in 2009. Recap of the survey results. By way of a reminder, the eRIP program, the goal is to match the employee intent with a budget strategy. Also, the program is being considered to increase budget capacity and to incentivize those already considering retirement. Also, when looking at the program, it is not to eliminate any positions in the short term or long term. By way of a contrast, when the ROP program was done several years ago, we had 229 participants, 126 of these positions were eliminated, or 55%. That is not the intent of the eRIP program. October the 8th, that was the initial survey. And we do want to thank everyone who did participate. Of the 3,018 employees, we had 966 responses. Of those 966 responses, 773 are currently enrolled in our plan. The next question was, are you considering retirement as of June 30 of 2015? 43, or only 4%, said yes. But when we asked the third question, which was if a retirement incentive program is offered, would this affect your decision? 497 of the 966, or 51%, responded yes. One observation that we did notice, of the 966, the average VRS years was 23. The average CPS experience was 16. So based on the initial results and responses coming forward, staff did ask for permission to do a second survey. That was done on November the 3rd. Now, what we did here was a more focused survey. We only surveyed those individuals who were age 50 with 10 years, or age 55 with five years and 17 years of experience. This was the same criteria that we used several years ago. Now, with that, you're looking at a population of 435 individuals. 310 did respond. Again, that was a good response rate of 71%. What we learned from this survey, 289 of the 310 were hired prior to July 1st, 2007. 263 of the 310 were on our health insurance plan and plan to continue. 133, or 43%, said they would be interested in a one-time 20% payment. However, 177 said they would be interested in a higher payout. So what we did was we expanded it. So what are some options for the school board to consider? Based on feedback received from our employees, staff is looking at potentially offering a one-time payout of 30%. And there are some benefits. Benefit number one, it is a better match for what the employee is looking for. Benefit number two, it might increase our participation at 30%. So what do the numbers look like? Scenario number one, a 20% payout if you had 30% of the employees, about 143, the planned savings would be 1.9. If you increased it and you had 40% to participate, planned savings 2.6. Keep in mind, this is if you were to provide a 20% payout. But if you increase it to 30%, as the employees are requesting more, your savings does go down. At a 30% participation rate, you're looking at 1.1. And then at a 40% participation, you're looking at about 1.5. And in working with Dr. Baker's budget, one of the things we were looking at is saving somewhere between 1.5 to 2 million. So this does put us in that range. So what are some scenarios? One thing you can consider is having a one-year window. There are benefits to the one-year window. Number one, you will have higher savings because you're only going to make that payment one year versus multiple years. Also, you have fewer unknowns. As you're looking at FY16, we have a good glimpse into what the state budget may look like. There's a short-term commitment, and it would provide the needed savings in FY16 to address priorities. Now, what are some associations with the more than one year? It would be less savings because if you pay the incentive two or more years, that does dip into your savings. There are more unknowns. For FY17, FY18, we do not know what the budget looks like at the state level nor the local level. There's a multi-year commitment, and we may not get the needed savings that we need in 2016, particularly if history were to repeat itself. When we had our program a couple years ago, most of the employees opted the third year. And right now, in order to complete the '16 budget, it would be helpful to have the savings in the '16 budget. So those are just two options for the school board to consider this evening. There are some other options. Number one, one item according to policy, is that employees hired before July 1, 2007 would only be eligible. If you're hired after this time period, you would not. The current policy states that in order to retire, you have to have 15 consecutive years of service, which will bring you at 2022. Another option for the school board to consider, we're looking at age 50 with 10 years and age 55 with five, because these parameters come from VRS. However, in looking at the 17 years of VRS, this was a general practice that was used by Prince William County. We also used this practice back in 2009. But one option that the school board could consider would be to have the VRS experience be 15 years versus the 17 years. And by doing so, we would have an additional 113 people that would be eligible, which could increase our savings. So we did hear the requests coming from our employee loud and clear. So that's another option that the school board has. Here, we put down no work requirement for a couple reasons. One is the IRS implications. Number two, there's a lot of tracking that goes involved with the no-work requirement. And most importantly, most of our employees who have retired, teachers, certified, they come back and serve as long-term subs already. So therefore, we're already getting the benefit. If the school board were to approve the plan, staff is recommending a declaration date no later than March the 16th. That will give us enough time to look at the exact numbers, scrub it before the budget is actually approved by the supervisors, April the 14th. Other options available, the employee retirement date. Staff is recommending that it be for the end of the contract, which is FY2015. Also, consistent with current policy, the monies will go into a 403B plan, and that is beneficial primarily because of the fiscal impact. The employee nor the employer will pay the FICA, which is 7.6%. So what, by way of next steps, if approved, we will begin to disseminate the information to our employees. We would also bring back to you, at the next meeting, the eRIP policy. We would share that with the employees. And then we would have educational And then we would have educational seminars between January 13th and March 13th. We've already reached out to three of the high schools just to make sure that the program is offered division-wide. We would also do frequently asked questions. We would also extend the hours of the HR department through 6:00 PM for retirement meetings. And we would collect the forms no later than March the 16th, 2015. And most importantly, this particular recommendation this evening, we would like to include it in the superintendent's proposed budget. That's why it's important that we bring it to you this evening for a decision because Dr. Baker will be presenting on January the 20th. So at this time, staff will be happy to review the different scenarios, and then you can give staff direction.
Dr. Meyer.
Mrs. Gaines, is it my understanding then that as I've identified three items that you're asking the board to make a decision this evening?
Yes, sir.
The 20 versus the 20% versus 30%? The one-year versus more than one year? And the VRS 15 or 17? Were those the three items, or did I miss something?
Those are the three. Everything else basically are necessary based on prescribed rules.
Now, first with the 20 versus the 30, what's the delta difference, about 800,000?
Eight hundred thousand for 30% and 1.1 for 40% participation. So about a million.
Is there a recommendation from staff as which would be garner the most benefit for the, for our employees, but at the same time, you know, as we're trying to work through the budget?
I would say 30% because that's a better match of what the employer is looking for as well as the employee. I think that one would be a win-win for everyone.
And what about, so you're circling 30% then is what you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Then, one-year versus more than one year, would it not be best just to finalize on one-year since we don't know the, it's unknown, the outer years?
Yes, and what we could do, based on direction given by the school board, we could explore it annually. Nothing will prevent us from doing that. So as we start to prepare the budget for '17, '18, and '19, we could always look and see what the state budget looks like and bring back an eRIP each year.
And on the third item, you mentioned there was about 110 more eligible employees if we went with the VRS at 15 versus 17, like we heard from the speaker this evening?
Yes, sir.
Which would be a benefit for both employees. And so then it looks like, I'm going to put out there for my fellow board members, we go with the 30%, the one-year, and the 15-year VRS.
Mr. Laura.
I would just, I'd like to weigh it on the 30, the one, and the 15 years. I think that's the fairest way for us to go.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Okay, so we have a motion that we go with the 30%, let me make sure I have this right, for one year at 15 years of VRS.
Correct. I'll second that motion.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Grant and a second by Dr. Meyer. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the 30, one-year, and 15 for the eRIP? Aye, please?
Aye.
So we have a 6-1, I'm sorry, 6-0, Mr. Blaine is absent.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaines.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. And now we are on to 6.04, Mr. Hockaday. And Ms. Finley. 8.04, okay.
It's okay, we got you. Good evening, Ms. Shelley, School Board, Dr. Baker, and Dr. Meyer. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present to you this evening. My name is Shannon Finley, and I am the procurement manager. And with me is Mr. Sean Hockaday, Director of Maintenance. Staff is requesting school board approval to replace a maintenance pickup truck that was totaled in an accident. This vehicle will be a replacement for a 2002 F-250 pickup truck. The insurance claim has already been paid to SCPS for the value of the totaled vehicle, which was $5,862. The replacement vehicle, which will be a 2015 F-250, will serve the ongoing daily transportation needs of the maintenance department that are currently not being met as a result of the accident, leaving the department short one vehicle. If approved, the purchase will be made from Colonial Ford and Truck Sales by utilizing state contract. At this time, staff is recommending that the school board approves the purchase of one four-wheel-drive pickup truck from maintenance CIP funds for $25,578.16. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for any questions you may have for me or Mr. Hockaday.
I'll make, have a motion, please. Mr. Laura, and a second, and a second, Dr. Meyer. Now, any discussion or questions? Mr. Braswell.
My question, we received $5,800 from the insurance, and I see that the estimated cost is $25,578. Is that including the insurance costs? Or is insurance money that we received going into a separate pool of money?
Correct, sir, those insurance monies will be going into a separate fund, and we will be paying the full cost from CIP.
Any more questions or comments?
I have a comment real quick. I would like to point out that this is Ms. Shannon Finley's first, I think, conversation with us since you've been hired, and you did a very nice job.
Thank you.
And it's been like six months, I think, since you've been here. And we really appreciate all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Okay, and any more questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, 6-0 with Mr. Blaine absent, thank you. Okay, we are going on, and you are staying here.
I am.
Ms. Finley and Mr. Hockaday, that's 8.04, 8.05, On-Call Architecture Engineering.
Once again, thank you. Mr. Hockaday is also going to be presenting this item with me. The School Board Division issued a request for proposals for on-call architectural and engineering services for use by the Spotsy County Maintenance Department. The procurement was advertised on Eva, which is the statewide electronic procurement website. An ad was placed in the Richmond Time Dispatch, and it was published on the Division's purchasing website. All of this resulted in over 30 firms submitting proposals. The evaluation committee, which consisted of three individuals, individually reviewed, scored each proposal, submitted. Once the scoring was complete, the initial scores were sent back to purchasing, where the scores were then compiled, and the top-scoring proposals were identified in each of the following fields: architectural, engineering, civil, and testing. Interviews were then arranged between the highest-scoring proposals from each category, the evaluation committee, and procurement. The purpose of this intent for, I'm sorry, the purpose and intent of this request for proposals was to establish a pool of vendors for on-call architectural and engineering services. The following criteria were used in our proposal. Each experience, I'm sorry, experience qualifications, ability to perform were worth 35 out of a possible 100 points. Past performance, project scheduling, performance, general overall completion of past projects on time and on budget was worth 30 points. References were 15, and interviews were 20. The benefits of this contract, if approved, will allow maintenance the ability to have a pool of nine different vendors with varied specialties to choose from for any A&E project that may be completed. Based on the initial scoring of the proposals and interviews conducted, the staff is recommending that the school board award contracts to the top nine firms. Each of the four, each with one year, four additional renewal options. The services provided will be funded through the Capital Projects Fund, and projects' costs will vary depending on the project's scope, the number of projects completed during the contract period. The top nine firms are as follows: BCWH Architects, Mosley Architects, Hughes Group Architects, Crabchi, Robra and Associates, Stantec, Atlantic Geotechnical Services Incorporated, Timmins Group, Obachain, Linkal, Daniels, and Soick, and Wigan Associates. Once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and open the floor to any questions that you may have.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Dr. Meyer and Ms. Grant, thank you. Any discussion or questions?
I do have a question. I just want to check in with this. There is no costs upfront, it's when they do their, when we have to call upon them?
Correct, yes, ma'am. According to the VPPA, the professional services, you are not allowed to ask for cost estimates and budgets upfront just because of the nature of the projects. They're so varied, and that things change so rapidly that it's hard to actually put a cost on a type of project like this.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any ayes? Okay, 6-0, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
8.06, approval for revisions to cash policy, to revisions of policy DM is Gaines.
Okay, thank you. Change funds were reestablished at the secondary level in 2011. And they are now being reestablished at the elementary level this school year. The Food Service Task Force is in support of this initiative, thus to be consistent with practice. Revisions are needed to DM. This will allow the cafeteria change funds to remain in school buildings overnight. And over the summer months, the change funds will be held at the school division's bank institution. Staff is recommending revisions to the policy as presented.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Blaylock, and second by Dr. Meyer, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any ayes? Okay, 6-0. Ms. Gaines, 8.07.
Okay, the next few items are all related. 8.07, revisions to DLR2 payroll procedures, payment of accumulated annual leave and sick leave. In looking at the policy that is before you or the regulation, when we instituted the plan several years ago, whenever you make a decision that payments will go into a 403B plan, you cannot make cash payments. Once you make a decision that you will use the 403B approach, when someone passes away, IRS prohibits us from making a payment into a deceased employee's 403B account. So therefore, in looking at DLR2, anywhere where you see language that states estate or death, that language has to be striked out. And the reason why this became so prevalent is because we did actually have an employee who did pass away. So we want to be consistent with the correct practices and be in compliance with IRS. The law, yes. So at this time, staff is recommending that you approve revisions to policy DLR2 payroll procedures.
Second.
So Dr. Meyer made the motion, and second by Ms. Braswell. Any discussion?
Well, isn't it a similar reason?
That's correct, mhm. The same as 8.09 as well, all three are related.
Madam Chair, could I suggest then, as Ms. Grant was suggesting, that we just bundle 8.07, 8.08, and 8.09? Because they're all tied, and they all have to be consistent. I'll modify my motion to include the three.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer, I'd like to second that.
Okay, all in favor of 8.07, 8.08, and 8.09? Aye, please?
Aye.
Any ayes? And 6.0, 6-0, thank you. Informational items on the Commonwealth Governor's School Head Start Discipline Report and items, any, anything that needs to be brought up? Thank you very much. Okay, any unfinished business? I'm going to mention as well, this is, everyone has a list of your committee report, your committee assignments from the last year. If you would like to have anything changed, if you would like to serve on a different committee, just let me know within the next week so we can, I can take a look and see if there's some people that want to change and flip-flop or something like that. So just if you could get back with me, just send me an email with your suggestions or your preferences, I'd appreciate that. And is there any new business?
Yes, Madam Chair. Last Friday, I was approached by Jarvis Bailey, who is the chairman of the Northeast Region, VSBA, and asked whether we would consider being a host to the next regional meeting. The regional meeting that we had at one time was on March 31st, which presented UMTIN conflicts. It was conflicts not only for us, but of the other 12 divisions. So he came back to me on Friday and said, Jim, would you consider, or would your board consider being the host on April the 20th? April the 20th is, I think, the third Monday in April. I've asked Dr. Baker to check the calendar, and it appears that there are no conflicts with anything scheduled right now because this would be an evening event. It usually starts around 5:00 and continues on to about 8:30. What occurs is the judging of the artwork that is presented. So there is the, what student art is presented for review within the 13 divisions. That occurs, there's usually a dinner and a short meeting. So the question to us is, will we host? Are we willing to host the VSBA regional meeting? And if so, then I need to get in touch with Jarvis, and I'm going to pass the baton on to our newly-elected chair. He's with the Fredericksburg City School Board, and she works with Fredericksburg City Schools. The two of them can talk very easily. And because there will be a lot of coordination. So the question is, new business, if we're willing to be the host, we just have to give Ms. Shelley the nod so that, because there's going to be a lot of coordination work with getting that set up. But he needs to know so he can advise the others, other school divisions, if we are going to be the host.
Dr. Meyer, may I ask a question?
Yes.
I understand the work that goes on and the coordination. Is there any cost?
That, I'm not sure of, and that's, I think, Ms. Shelley's going to have to find that out. To answer your question, I'm not sure. Because VSBA does host some of this, and I'm not sure if they also reimburse or pay. I'm not sure.
I would be in favor of hosting, but I would like to know what the cost is because that's, that might change my position.
It may be an opportunity also. The last time that there was, that it was hosted, I do know that the cafeteria program had won its sponsored, whatever would be offered. And, but those are questions that we need to answer.
Yeah.
Mr. Laura, thank you for that question. I will get the information and then pass that on.
Yep. And just on a side note, because I've been to some of these regional meetings, and a 5 o'clock meeting, sometimes people from up north hesitate to come to Fredericksburg and arrive here at 5 o'clock. You're fighting the rush hour. So that's another, on a weeknight, 5 o'clock to Fredericksburg? That's, that'll be something that I would raise with them.
And that same discussion, what we had with them, that point, that very point was raised. And they were trying to go north, and then they were having some conflict. So, you know, I think that's where our newly-elected chair is, will have to sound things out.
I will get some information, and I will pass it back on to everyone. So thank you very much for those good thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board members.
Any other new business? Okay, on to item 11.01, closed meeting items. Consideration of candidates for employment assignment promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved?
Okay, motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Braswell. To go into closed session, we are in closed session. Okay, do you have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
So, Dr. Meyer with the, with the motion, and a second by Ms. Grant. Certification of close-
Call for the vote.
Oh, call, sorry, thank you. Call all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0, Mr. Blaine and Mr. Laura absent. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this debate, on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Grant.
Get a motion, please.
Motion, motion, thank you. Motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Braswell and Ms. Grant, roll call vote, Ms. Grant.
Grant, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Shelley, aye. 5-0 with Mr. Laura and Mr. Blaine absent. And with the-
I move to adjourn.
We've got, we've got to make a motion, closed meeting-
Oh, I thought we already did that.
Sorry. Dr. Martin.
Okay. The motion is that the school board accepts the recommendation of the Superintendent for Personnel Appointments, Assignments, Reclassifications, Resignations, and Retirements as presented in closed meeting, and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Okay, may I have a motion for the items from the closed meeting, please?
So moved.
Mr. Braswell, and a second.
So moved.
Ms., Dr. Meyer, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now.
Now, Ms. Grant.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Ms. Grant.
Second, Meyer.
Second, Dr. Meyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Thank you.
All have a good evening.